I'm gonna answer a few questions, John will be here in about five minutes. I guess he gets stuck in traffic, I'll be in five. But remember, this is kinda y'all bed. So, uh, what questions might y'all have to say, just to anybody else?
So the coronary, uh, pathway, is that what it is?
Coronary circuit.
Yeah, so what exactly is the importance of that? I know it like is the arteries around the heart, like what exactly do I even know?
Okay, so, um, the, the blood that goes through the heart, through the atria, ventricles, um, the endothelial lining, the blood doesn't pass through that. The heart muscle itself doesn't get any nutrients, uh, from the blood that's circulating through the heart. So it has to, has to, has to have its own circulation. And so that's what the coronary circulation does. It rises from the aorta, so it means oxygen, blood from the aorta, um, to the left and right coronary artery, uh, then down the interventricular vessels, and then goes back into the right atria through the, uh, coronary sinus. But, uh, it has to have its, has to have oxygen and glucose, because the, uh, heart muscle can't undergo anaerobic, uh, respiration. It has to have oxygen, otherwise it dies. And it's replaced with fibrous connective tissue, it doesn't pass away, so it loses its contractility. Sorry, did I go too long?
No, I mean something.
Okay.
I have a question about the, um, is this picture? The pressures at working in the capillary? Can you just like go over that?
I hope it's good up here, I proved this for my class the other day, yep. I'm gonna get rid of this paper. Hey, all these offices is hot, the peppermint smell. Alright, so you have four pressures, it's really two, uh, but we can, we make it into four, okay? So you have the hydrostatic pressure, which is almost equivalent to blood pressure. It's the fluid pressure pushing against the arterial wall, okay? Then you have osmotic pressure, which deals with solutes. We always say, I say it like this, and it's wrong in, in terms of physics, but solutes suck, alright? And so water's gonna follow the, the solutes. So you have two pressures, our hydrostatic pressure and osmotic pressure. What is four, because you have, um, fluid pressure in the capillary, fluid pressure outside the capillary. You have osmotic pressure inside the capillary, and you have osmotic pressure outside the capillary. I know this is a lot, it, it, what it's trying to show you is, uh, and I, I could draw this again to go one to two. Um, it's trying to show you that you're filtering out fluid on the arterial end of the capillary bed, and you're reabsorbing fluid on the ventuine of the capillary bed. So the only pressure value that changes, so this is HPC, the hydrostatic pressure of the capillary, osmotic pressure of the capillary, uh, hydrostatic, uh, is that an H?
Yeah.
HPIF, hydrostatic pressure of the interstitial fluid, and osmotic pressure of the interstitial fluid. Are you with me? I know this a lot.
Yeah.
Alright, so e- each one of these, we can assign values to, and if we know which one is a outward force and an inward force, then we can calculate the net filtration pressure. So, um, your HPC is the fluid pressure pushing outward, pushing outward against the capillary wall. OPC is the fluid pressure pushing, it's not fluid pressure, the osmotic pressure pushing in the capillary wall. And that's due to the amount of solutes that's in, uh, dissolved within the blood. Osmotic, so the solutes suck, remember, it's, it's pulling water in. And then HPIF, fluid pressure pushing against the arterial wall, or capillary wall. Uh, and then the OPIF is the solute concentration out here in the interstitial fluid that creates a pulling power out. So it gives you inward forces, outward forces, and if you add up your, uh, two outward forces, we did here, thirty-five plus one, and then your inward forces, you subtract them, it'll give you your net filtration pressure, which is around ten millimeters of, uh, fluid pressure pushing out against the, uh, capillary wall. And so that just shows you that on this end, you're gonna have fluid moving out, okay? And then on this end, so as you move across the capillary beds, you're gonna lose pressure because there's a lot of friction. Uh, that friction reduces pressure, and you're also losing fluid as you go through it. And so the HPC, your hydrostatic pressure of the capillary, goes down, okay? So that's the only value that changes, is the, the HPC. So instead of it being thirty-five on the arterial end, it reduces to around seventeen on the ventuine. And then we can just plug that back into that formula that we had over here, with the outward forces and inward forces. Uh, so seventeen plus one minus twenty-six plus zero, the outward forces minus the inward forces would give us a negative eight. Now, negative eight is a, when you see negative numbers, it's a sucking force or a pulling force. So that's causing fluid to move back in to the ventuine. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Now, knowing this, we can ask, uh, physiology questions of this. What happens, uh, to the amount of fluid in the interstitial space if your blood pressure goes up?
It increases.
Say it again.
It increases.
It increases, why does it increase?
Because the pressure is pushing it in.
Yeah, a lot higher, so i- if we say that your blood pressure goes up, right? Uh, if this value here goes from thirty-five to forty, then that's gonna cause your outward forces to increase higher than your inward forces, so it's gonna cause more fluid to leak out. And so, y'all like the Ichiban, wait, uh, what do you call it, that's not what it's, Yamato? Yeah, uh, they like, they like to add a lot of salt in it, how does that affect your blood pressure?
Okay, so.
Makes it go up. Every time, uh, I eat there, like, I don't take my ring off, but I really can't get it off after I eat there, because what happens?
Swell.
I swell, and that's, that's what's causing that, is your higher blood pressure causes more fluid to leak out into the tissue space. What do we call that? The term for it?
Adrenaline.
Adrenaline, yeah, so that causes adrenaline, right? So we can look at the values there, um, and maybe look at how we maintain some homeostatic set points. Uh, how can we control the blood pressure going into the capillary bed, right? Uh, you're gonna have basal constriction to reduce the pressure going into the capillary bed, so you don't lose as many fluids. Uh, the other thing is, I have up there albumin, so that is the main, uh, protein that creates that cordoid osmotic pressure. Uh, is created by the liver. With me on there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so albumin is the main plasma protein that causes this sucking force or pulling force of fluid back into, uh, the blood vessels. So what happens if, uh... Sorry, I lost my, Marley, if you just started drinking heavily, uh, at, at this age, uh, and then maybe ten, you're just straight alcoholic until you're thirty, what happens to your liver?
It deters.
Okay, okay.
It's damaged.
Yeah, it's damaged, right? So we've damaged the liver, and we said the liver is the main thing that produces this protein, right? So if it's damaged, how's that gonna affect the production of that plasma protein?
Will decrease.
It would cause it to go down, alright? And so if that goes down, then that causes this value to decrease, at twenty-six for the OPC. And so that's gonna cause you to, cause this value to decrease, which causes this value to go up. So there again, you might get adrenaline as well. Does that make sense? Sorry.
So it's, uh, albumin is responsible for the OPC?
Yes, uh, so it's the main, uh, plasma protein that is responsible for your OPC. Uh, I told the story in lecture the other day that I used to give, uh, blood plasma, places like that, and you can do it so many times a year, but it depletes your, uh, protein if you're not getting enough nutrients. So I went one time and they said, oh, your protein levels are low. That's really what they were checking, was, uh, the levels of albumin within the blood plasma. Good? Alright, any others? Bless you.
Thank you.
Can we go over the ventricles and the, um, ECG?
Um, I, I don't ask too many questions over ECG here, I'm at this point, so, uh... Alright, that's terrible. Alright, so the first little deflection, what is that?
P wave.
That's the P wave, right? So P wave is there, what does the P wave represent?
Atrial depolarization.
Atrial depolarization, uh, so this is... Uh, just to repeat it. Uh, so that's atrial depolarization, uh, and then what's the next wave deflection?
QRS complex.
Yeah, so this is Q, R, and S. So it's your QRS complex, what does that represent?
Ventricular depolarization.
So that's ventricular depolarization. And then what is the last wave deflection?
T wave.
That's the T wave, and so what does a T wave represent?
Ventricular repolarization.
Ventricular repolarization. Alright, so we see atrial, uh, depolarization, ventricular repo- uh, sorry, ventricular depolarization, ventricular depolarization, uh, ventricular repolarization, where is atrial, uh, repolarization? It, it's hidden, alright? This, this wave deflection is really large, uh, so it hides or masks the atrial repolarization. Now, we need to know what that means. So what is depolarization?
Like contraction?
It's the signal sent before contraction.
What signal, what type of signal?
An electrical signal.
Electrical, so this is, what this is recording is the electrical signals being sent across the heart. So atrial depolarization, uh, is the electrical signal spreading across the atria. And then ventric- uh, ventricular depolarization, that's why it's so big, because it's a bigger muscle that that electrical signal is traveling. And there's a reason for like, if you want, um, there's a guy called Engineer.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I like him, um, but he, he does a great explanation of, if you need to know this, like the... The way the waves are traveling, why you might have a downward deflection or an upward deflection, uh, on the ECG. But right now, I, if you can give me P, Q, R, S, T, and what they mean, I, I would be good with that. Um, the only other thing here, um, ask y'all to note, or this is just mine, is that if you have a... An elevated ST segment, right? Um, that's a heart attack. Uh, they, they refer to those as STEMMIs. Uh, ST elevated myocardial infarction, and it's not always elevated, it could be below, uh, the baseline as well. Uh, but that would let you know that your patient is having a heart attack. Is that what you meant? I'm sorry.
Um, will you be asking about like V-fib and stuff?
Um, I won't have, uh, cardiograms on the test. Um, it would be good to know what V-fib is. What is V-fib?
Like whenever it keeps contracting, it doesn't relax?
That's, uh...
V-fib is when there's no, like, it doesn't actually, there's no, uh... I, I know the picture, but I can't explain it, yeah, there's no like...
Yeah, they're so QRS.
Yeah, uh, and so V-fib is where you have like just an irregular electrical signal traveling through the heart, and it's gonna cause the heart to, it says worms in a sack, they're, they're not contracting in sync. Uh, that's where they would go clear, right? And they would use the fibrillator, kind of flatten on everything, try to get the ions to go back into that sinus rhythm. What you said was, uh, tetanus, so if it contracts and won't relax, that's a titanic contraction.
Okay, and V-fib is where it just doesn't contract in unison?
Yeah, they're not contract, the, the, uh, functional sensation is no longer there.
Is V-fib the one you use the fibrillator?
Yes, that's, why is V-fib more dangerous than A-fib?
Because it has to push out more force?
Close, it, it does deal with the blood moving.
It's not enough coming in at one time? Like not enough blood coming in?
Doesn't give it time to refill the ventricles.
Say it again.
It doesn't give it time to refill the ventricles.
Perfect, so it has to, it has to fill back up, right? And so ventricular fibrillation, if all these muscles are doing this, is that giving a good contraction to pump the blood out of the ventricle?
Mm-hmm.
No? So that one's more dangerous, because you don't have a strong enough contraction to get the blood to flow out. A-fib is, it's still dangerous, don't, don't get me wrong, but A-fib, the majority of the blood coming back to the heart, passively flows from the atria into the ventricle. It's only the last twenty percent that gets contracted and pushed into the heart. So that's why there's more concern with ventricular fibrillation than with atrial fibrillation. Good?
Do you find that that's open?
Perfect, okay. That links back to what she was saying with the titanic contractions. Uh, and so this is, uh, happening, uh, within the, have you, have you taken, I've got to take one. Yes, sorry, we're in one of six. Sorry. Good morning.
You went to the wrong room, too.
No. She went to the third floor.
I went to the very slow.
Only later.
Yes, Eric asked me a question. You wanna do this one for me? Uh, she wants to know about, uh, the plateau phase, doing the calcium and, uh, heart, uh, thinking a long day, maybe a week. Alright, so, um, with the cardiac muscle, right? Uh, you have a longer repolarization, um, this is also referred to as a refractory period. Do you remember in skeletal muscle, we talked about refractory periods? What is that?
Like the, like the period where it stops, like, there, you, like...
Close, you can't send another depolarization until that refractory period ends, right? And so in periods of time, this, uh... Plateau phase, that's around two hundred milliseconds, uh, the refractory period, in a skeletal muscle... This is only around two milliseconds, uh, with the refractory period. So what allows this to stay elevated for a longer period of time, stay more positive for a longer period of time? You're gonna have calcium channels that open up and stay opened up, uh, and that causes it to stay positive for a longer period of time. What is the purpose in this longer refractory period?
Allows the heart to fill up with blood?
How, you're right, it does allow it to fill back up.
Like the, uh, atrium? Like, 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 the atrium, or the atrium filling the ventricle?
Okay, what does it have to do in order for it to fill? That's, that's, I guess that's what I'm asking.
Relax.
Say it again?
Relax.
It has to relax, right? And so this allows the heart, uh, the ventricle enough time to fully relax and stay relaxed, so that it'll fill completely and then contract, right? So that's what this, so this period of time, or the absolute refractory period, you can't send another electrical signal until that's over. So it lets the heart relax fully before it sends a contraction. If it didn't, i- if we didn't have this refractory period, it would lead to what Ashley mentioned a minute ago, where it contracts and stays contracted, what's that called?
Tetanus.
Tetanus, alright, so, uh, titanic contractions. Good?
For your test, do we need to know, like, the calcium entering and the sodium and all that for the...
Know where the calcium comes from, too, that, that would be important. With, with heart muscle, it, it doesn't just come from that sarcoplasmic particulum, where does it come from?
He said the way.
Uh, for the heart muscle, it doesn't just come from that sarcoplasmic particulum like it did with, uh, skeletal muscle? Where does it come from? Extra cell, so a, a lot of the, the calcium that, that's aiding with the heart contraction is extra cellular calcium, so it's coming from outside of itself, not just the, uh, sarcoplasmic particulum. Alright, any others? Carly, you don't have questions for me? Huh? Annie, you got some more for me? I'm sorry, I just...
Um...
Is it good? Maddie?
Can we talk about the, it says related three types of extrinsic regulation of the heart in your face?
So extrinsic, uh, outside. Um, so one of them would be, uh, chronotropic agents, anatroptic agents. Uh, we'd be two big ones, where they're, uh, what does chron mean?
Time.
Say it again?
Time.
Time, so what would those affect? Long term?
Like structural.
What's it going to affect, chronotropic agents?
What's controlling the heartbeat? What's setting the pace?
Yeah, so the SA, SA, so the SA, it's close, yeah, that, SA, not, right, this, this is gonna control the pace of the heart. Uh, and then you have, uh, positive and negative in- anatroptic agents, uh, so what would those affect?
I don't know. I was gonna say something.
Say it! Before you work on it.
Yeah.
So those are going to affect contractility, right? And so i- if it's a positive anatroptic agent, what's it gonna do? Is it gonna make it contract stronger or weaker?
Stronger.
Stronger, and so why would we want the heart to contract stronger? Then, I'm, I'm using this as an example, so if I squeeze this really tight, right? Well, the water squirt out a lot, um, but if I just squeeze really hard, what happens? So why would we want the heart to contract with a stronger force? And, and in what situation would we need that to happen?
Uh, like exercising, maybe?
Exercising, okay. What else? Did you say stress?
Heart is...
Alright, yes, she did, she said stress, yeah, times of stress. So what hormones would be considered an anatroptic agent?
That would be epinephrine and dopamine.
Hold on, and there's another one, um, the thyroid hormone, uh, would, would be considered an anatroptic, making you feel faster. You need me to spell anatroptic?
What chapter is this?
I was like, where is it in the PowerPoint?
Yeah, seventeen, eighteen.
The seventeenth.
Seventeen.
I see chronos, but I don't think...
Anatroptic?
Okay, so you're saying that chronotropic agents control the pace of the nodes?
Yes.
Okay, and, and is it anatroptic?
Ino.
Okay, anatroptic agents control force?
Yes.
Anatroptic is, uh, right before, right before we see show volume, I mean pre-low contractility and after low. It's expected to produce show volume, contractility, and anatroptic is right under.
Okay.
He loves water bottles. He loves water bottles. He plays with them all the time, I swear, it's like every day he plays with them.
I went from this, uh...
Yeah.
And things that will affect, uh, the value, what causes them to change? Oh, uh, can I come back to the, I'm so sorry. Why is the HPIF zero? There is fluid out here, why is it a value of zero? Why isn't it pushing in? We haven't got to this chapter yet, but... So this little green thing up here called a lymphatic capillary. If there's any excess fluid, that fluid gets drained into the lymphatic capillary. So if there's any excess pressure, that fluid moves in here, uh, the, uh, extra cellular fluid move into the lymphatic capillaries, uh, and then it would be filtered out through your lymphatic system and then put back into the blood. So here, you filter out roughly thirty liters of fluid every day coming out, but you only reclaim about twenty-seven. How many liters are left? Three, so where does the other three liters go?
What?
The lymphatic system, right, they go out into the lymphatics. So that's why you don't have that swelling stay there long term, because eventually it's gonna go into the, uh, be filtered out. Sorry, I meant, I meant to mention that one. Alright, y'all wanna, me and John to leave and...
I have one more question, okay, so the extrinsic regulation, the only two factors of that are chronotropic and anotropic?
Uh, so it's also gonna deal with the, the, uh... Your, your blood volume's gonna have an effect on that, so the amount of blood coming back to the heart. EDV.
So if, uh, epinephrine nor epinephrine, thyroid hormone are chronotropic agents, right?
Yes. But, alright, so, and, and so here's the thing, epinephrine nor epinephrine are also anatroptic agents. So they, they not only speed up your heart, but they also cause it to contract harder. So think about like when you're in a car accident, your heart feels like it's gonna jump out of your chest, that's the contractility that you're feeling.
Yeah, so is that something, are you on anatroptic agent or is it not? Not for this, not for this. What is one, what is one, he said things that speed up the heart, what is the one that slows down the heart? Here's authentic, coming from the vagus nerve. Try to put the A. A, C, the point. If your albumin level is high within the capillary bed, what does that tell you? What's happening? Okay, just, right? If your albumin, albumin protein within the capillary bed, you know that's, it's drawing water in, right? So if your albumin level is extremely high, what do you expect to see? What is happening with the body? What, why would you have a high albumin level?
High blood pressure? Would it be high blood pressure?
Hmm, think more volume. Start with that.
So it'd be more blood volume, like, or is it viscosity? I'm not sure what you're thinking.
So if you have high albumin or albumin levels, right? You're causing water to draw in, right? You have high levels, more, your body's trying to get more volume to rise, so you're in a state of what?
Dehydration.
Dehydration, so if you have any high levels of albumin, you're expected to have some physiological dehydration. What are some things to kind of, kind of combat that in that same sense? Think hormones, Dustin was kinda saying it earlier, I'm just stemming off what he was saying.
ADH?
A- ADH, what is it doing, what is it gonna do?
Helps release that water.
A little bit, a little bit more precise on, on what ADH does. What is ADH, what is it gonna do? Water retention, what organ will it target?
Give you...
Okay, what else would you find, what you find as far as physiology goes in the state of dehydration? What else, what other mechanisms could you find the body undergoing at that same time? He talked about it a lot, he said it last time, too, so, you say ADH, it was another hormone that he mentioned quite often. And what, what is that doing?
It's a little bit of retention.
So the retention, alright, uh, what if your heart rate is extremely too high? What going on will kind of combat that to kind of slow that heart rate down? It's released from the heart. And, and you, what is it doing?
So you make skin...
There you go. Which lowers what? Blood volume, which also lowers what? If you have a missing P wave on the ECG, what is that telling you?
A.
A-fib, alright, um, if you have an increase...
Hey, do you ask, do you ask them what it's called?
What's it?
Like if they miss it, the P wave, uh, what's it called?
No, 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 I just have to get them to see. I think it does, I'm trying to stem off what I was hearing Dustin say.
So I was gonna stem off what he said, so if you're missing a P wave, that's referred to as junctional rhythm, right? And then what is it called, this normal, uh, wave deflection called? It comes from the name of the pacemaker that's creating it, what is it? Say it. Sinus rhythm, yeah, it's like sinus shift. Be confident in your answers. Sinus rhythm is the normal wave deflection, if you're missing a, uh... you're missing a Q R S complex, yeah, so if you're missing a Q R S complex, that would be junctional rhythm. Your P wave is still beating, but uh you're gonna miss a a Q R S complex.
Once again, what's the S T segment for? You have to increase elevation of that plateau phase S T segment. Steady have the thonus, right, clot. It shows that you have a clot, so your your ventricles are still trying to pump and try to combat the obstruction. What are the three factors that can influence the blood pressure?
Blood volume.
Okay.
The resistance.
Okay. He said all the time, he's been like.
Heart rate.
Who?
Heart rate.
Oh, but not, that's one of the factors that determines something else that we just main in back and forth. Blood volume, resistance, and what else? No, that's another factor that determines this, what I'm actually looking for.
That's fine.
Nope. What does the short volume and heart rate give you? There you go, cardiac output is there, right, alright, um on average, what is your endystolic volume? Endo, okay, um what about your systolic?
Fifty.
Okay, how would you calculate the short volume?
Subtract.
The subtract what?
The endi- I guess, I don't know, you say, I mean that's systolic.
Okay, alright, um between both, I saw volume major contraction relaxation, are the valves open or they closed?
They're closed.
Close.
Okay, um true false, pre- preload affect contractility?
True.
How so?
Cause if you don't have blood in there, you're not pumping out anything. Can you name the lock? That's the the starlings.
If your contractility is increasing constantly, it's in took the reins off the contractility, what's what's eventually gonna happen to the preload?
Settle.
The contractility, the reins are off the tr- contractility and it's constantly pumping, increasing contractility, what would eventually happen to your preload? It's gonna decrease, why? Is what? Is what?
I say don't have enough time to feel.
You don't have enough time to feel, which goes back to what Dustin was saying about what?
It does.
Hmm? What phase was that, that's gonna be shortened by that time? What what phase? What else I haven't?
Have you ever asked, uh uh talked about extrasistole?
No.
I've had that happen, that's why I always try to throw that in there.
It'll be nice. She said, she said, she said, no, let's be extra for the test.
Don't drink too many uh energy drinks, just throwing it out there.
So are we gonna talk about the blood on the test for just like the heart?
Sure, blood for sure.
I haven't got the blood with mine.
Yeah.
Mine yet.
Yeah, I think, I think in our test, I'm trying to, we're on the same page as far as the chapters goes, I think we finally got, we started hemostasis, but we didn't finish it. So we only just covered the, at least the coagulances, thrombocytosis, things like that, so we didn't finish hemostasis yet. Uh but yeah, that would be most definitely.
Okay.
Yeah, um what's the first start of the flow of the heart, let's see what you got, what's the, what's the first start of the flow of the heart?
Talk about the node or where where it comes? So just be the cable.
Being cable, going into what chamber first?
Do you write H E?
Then to do what, what valve? Do what uh what chamber now? Okay, now do what simulant valve? Okay, going through what vessel now to the lungs?
The pulmonary trunk.
Through the pulmonary trunk, through what now?
The pulmonary veins.
Nope. Arises, okay, then coming back through what?
The lungs, wait.
Pulmonary what? Veins, through what chamber?
Left ventricle.
Through what valve? Okay, through the left ventricle, going out, through lastly, through what simulant valve? True false, pulmonary circuit has a higher pressure than the systemic circuit? Why?
It only has to pump to the lungs, not to the whole body?
Okay, that deals with what factor that's controlling the actual blood flow? We talked about those three factors. Short volume, or cardiac output, blood volume, then what else? What was that third factor? Not viscosity. Resistance, right, cause we talked about the the length, right, so if the length is shorter, pressure is gonna be a little bit lower, you don't need as much, right? So those arteries and veins are really shorter, so you don't really need enough pressure, that's why the pressure is lower in the pulmonary circuit versus systemic. What if your hydrostatic pressure, going back to what Dustin said, what if your hydrostatic pressure is over the limit of the osmotic? What would that lead into, if your hydrostatic pressure?
Increase blood pressure?
Hmm, not increase blood pressure, but what about signs that you can see in a patient that has high hydrostatic pressure within the capillary beds? And a decrease in the osmotic?
Basal relation?
Who?
Swelling.
Swelling, right, um specifically in in the perforate, right? Uh what two pumps did I say that was important for the venous return?
The skeletal and the uh pulmonary?
Pulmonary pump or respiratory pump, um but also too, with that pump, you have the assistance of the heart, how so? How is the heart helping with venous return? Dustin mentioned that last lecture too.
The arteries push on the veins.
Arteries, arteries pushing on the veins, having this whole circulation happen, alright, um.
Can I, can I go back?
Yeah.
So with that swelling, y'all were, I think y'all probably been pregnant, maybe, I don't know. But you've probably been around people that were pregnant, what do they all think complaining about? Angles and veins, what, what is causing that?
High blood pressure.
Why is their blood pressure high?
They're having a support to.
And with that, what do they have to increase? Say it again? Yeah, the blood volume goes up, right, and especially cause their blood pressure go up, so oftentimes, they're gonna have a Pima in their peripheral regions to try to understand their blood pressure is high. Because their stroke volume is high, but they've also increased the length of blood vessels just, right, so they're creating blood vessels throughout pregnancy. So those would have an effect on blood pressure as well. Good? Sorry, I was thinking about your motto and swelling, and I was like, oh yeah, pregnant one swells. Caroline, y'all have good questions?
We're just here.
I know, you just got out of practice.
If I think of anything, I'll.
Uh do you want to?
Yeah, they do.
And we'll, we'll walk away, apparently they like y'all more than us, so. We'll walk out for a minute. Where y'all going?
We gotta work out.
See you go work out.
Y'all gonna miss the fun part.
I think it's just, I think you only have one sitting that's here. Yeah, after they do the review, if y'all want, um she asked me if I wanted to, if y'all wanted to go over like the um the coagulation. I'll go over that, after they're done, I'll.
The what?
The coagulation, well, we haven't, you haven't gotten to it yet, but you can write it down for me, get the class next week, it'll, it'll make sense to you, you two do it. Yeah, we just gonna be talking about like the clotting factor.
Clotting? Coagulation, clotting?
Yeah, we just talked about.
They confused me.
No, we, yeah. Y'all save me about five, six minutes, yeah, you save me about five, six minutes and then I'll come again.
The part of the blood, like.
We went over in lab, yeah.
Like.
Yeah, we just ordered it. We did it in the lab.
I'm from Miami, not in.
That's what I said, a little acronym I learned, you have to try clothes before you die. So that's a good acronym, I like to remember it, in case you forget, so it's like, gotta try before you die.
Y'all do need to know the um what he was saying about the respiratory pump and skeletal pump, he gonna ask like what to.
Can we review that a bit? Can we review that a bit?
Um.
I don't, I mean, maybe once I see it, I'll remember it.
It has like, you know, in the veins, it has like almost no pressure, so what's getting you back to go?
With the skeletal muscle, like, it's gonna help with blood back to the heart, cause like contracting and like it's helping move it up, that's all you gotta know. But he not gonna go in that, he just gonna ask what's the two pump, well that's what it's just.
Okay, yeah, I remember, I remembered the skeletal.
Yeah.
We do, yeah, he didn't go into that.
It's skeletal and pulmonary?
Wait, pump, are you like on uh, I says, are you gonna ask us about the two pump? Like I told him, they need to know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we talked about that, cause I thought you, remember exercise is good for circulation, yoga is good for circulation, cause y'all.
Pulmonary.
So wait, what does he want for the two pump, skeletal and?
It's not a two pump, the skeletal and the um.
What's the other?
Respiratory.
I was like, is he calling it something different? Okay.
Oh.
So it is, you know that, yeah, those are the two pumps, they help um that blood to back to the heart. Need to know these, about five liters of blood. Hey, I made this note there?
We did this in the lab.
We only got through like the first part.
We kinda did this in lab, but like.
Yeah.
Hey, I made this note. Okay, y'all need, y'all need to know that plasma is majority made made of majority of blood. Cause he gonna ask like what, what element is made up majority of blood, it's gonna be like, that's on bucket coat, a retrocyte, so that's what I'm gonna be on. And then you know your bucket coat is what got your um lacy and your leukocytes, and that into like um what's it called, leukocytes and a retro.
We just ordered that.
Okay. I think, it's gonna be all the different stuff, I think our class is basically, we take the first. It's basically the same thing that I was just saying, like how you know plasma is a type and and your leukocyte is your leukocyte, like I remember asking a question about this. This is the blood function. Okay, y'all need to know these, the albumin, how he was saying that's responsible for um your C O P? That's basically what's just like drawing water into the body, so if it's lower, then you know that you have more water outside of the body. Because if it's high, it's drawing water in, so that's what he was saying about ADMA, if it's, if you have a low C O P, then you're not drawing any water in. So all your water is like in your tissues, so that's why you'll see a D. Y'all also need to know that um it contains your clotting proteins, stuff like that. And all this is in your um plasma. So the clotting protein is like with the albumin? It'll be like, no, like your um plasma, it just, huh? It's just like the way you got it formatted. Yeah, like. Okay, you see how it says um plasma protein, this will be like vitamin K, like that's something for the life. Um. The albumin, your albumin is just what's responsible for keeping um for drawing water in. But there's also a protein that is plasma, you know what I'm saying? Okay. Syrosis, um you know when um he was saying how if there's something wrong with your liver, then you have a decreased C O P? And so if your C O P is decreased, you know you're gonna have a D, so that's what they're saying about the ascites? Is having a D because you don't have the liver to make that protein, so without that albumin protein, you're gonna have a D, so that's what they're saying. And also gonna have um decline in clotting factors.
Cause your liver does, it functions with your clotting factor, so those people who have like cancer of the liver and alcohol, hepatitis. Those both interfere with the function of your liver, and it'll get into the path of intestinal confusion. But um but it it messes up with your liver function, so if your liver function is, your liver isn't sponsored for creating that albumin and helping your body clot. If it's messed up, it's like, it's not gonna let you, it's not gonna provide that, I mean, that albumin to say draw more fluid in, so you can pee it out. So if you're um, so like, you have abdominal ascites, to be honest, um you like, you can't give a patient a diuretic and they can pee it out, they have fluid in there, abdominal cavity because it's like the peritoneal space, so it can't really get in there. So they need the albumin from the liver to pull the fluid out, so you can pee it out.
That's why your liver's so important. Okay, just know that your red blood cell is a bicarbonate, he gonna ask that. And um you know that's what carries your oxygen, right? He gonna probably have like a fifty. So, you know it contains your hemoglobin, and you know that the iron part of your hemoglobin can bind to like oxygen, and that's gonna get you. And you know that the iron part of your hemoglobin can bind to like oxygen, and that's gonna give you your oxyhemoglobin. It can also bind to carbon dioxide, he had a question on here about these, like, um, if iron binds to carbon dioxide, and then you have to keep these. But he also have this, but you know that if you bind to oxygen. And y'all heard of like um, they call carbon monoxide poisoning? Yeah, that's what that is. Know the difference, plenty of the class, I always get these confused, like monoxide is carby, I don't even know how to say it. Carby, that, and the oxide is this, so know the difference. Erica here? Okay. Um, erythropolysis, you know like erythrocyte, they're just saying the red blood cell, so that's all I was talking about with these, it's a red blood cell. So he's gonna have on there, what is the process that produces in erythrocyte, and you know it's erythropolysis.
A bit later, if y'all remember that, like, remember erythron is like, your erythrocyte is like blood, and you kind of think of that P S produce. Erythron produce.
Erythron. And then you got like um, what's the other one? Thrombopolysis, um, let, um, leuko, leukopoiesis, it all mean the same thing, like leukocytes, that's the white. And then thrombo, they gotta do with your platelet. He talked about this? I couldn't remember what he said about it, I know this one. Should be like a diagram somewhere. This. He talking about this. Erythropolis, how that's important. Cause you need that hormone, that's what they was saying. Right here. It's secreted by the kidneys, but you need that hormone in order to get to your next step, step four. And he also talked about this. Did he go in depth about this? Well, this is just saying where like, before it's mature, this is just saying like it gets it in and entering your bloodstream. So that's why this stuff is just so important, and then when it in your bloodstream, it's gonna be mature, erythrocyte.
Do you have any questions, if there are particular ones that y'all like, mm, kinda don't, kinda don't understand?
Um, I mean, I don't know, we just started.
Y'all wanna go to eighteen?
Well, I, I have a question about cirrhosis, is that how you say it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't, okay, so the cirrhosis is basically just the liver, like, decreasing function, essentially? And so if the liver, it doesn't, if it's not where it should be, then the albumin hasn't been produced.
Yeah.
The albumin is not in the bloodstream, then, is it the water that's in the tissues, is that what it is?
Uh-huh, albumin is what's drawing water in. So if you don't have albumin, then your water's gonna be in the tissues, so that's how you're having a D.
Okay.
That's all it's saying, cause your liver, it produces like clotting proteins, y'all gonna get to that, it's like at the end of this chapter, like, what you need for like, like if you're bleeding out, clot, if there's something wrong with your liver, you're not gonna be able to clot and stop bleeding. Um, the liver also, like I was saying about the albumin, is preventing the D.
And the best way I like to think about cirrhosis, back, this is gonna back to nursing, but um, it's basically scarring of the tissue.
Oh, you told us scarring.
Yeah, that's what I.
Cause the liver can basically, it can regenerate itself, so again, injury can regenerate itself, but if it's constantly getting injured, it's basically building hard plaque around it, like it's hardening itself, like it can't function. So if it can't produce, send out those harm, I mean, them clotting factors that are human, the body's not getting what it needs to do to function for those albumin and the clotting factors.
We can go to eighteen if y'all want. But it's up to y'all. If y'all got like a specific question, I could like, I didn't own eighteen, so.
Y'all did seventeen last time.
Y'all did seventeen last? Yeah, he just sent me nineteen, so I thought maybe I was home nineteen, he didn't send me eighteen, but I mean. Just let me know if y'all have a question.
Okay, so I wonder.
Y'all get this, huh?
I wonder, I wonder how, um, this is, explain the relationship between cross-sectional areas of the blood vessels and the rate of blood flow, like. Can you break that down simply?
Say it again?
Explain the relationship between cross-sectional area of blood vessel and the rate of blood flow.
It's, I don't remember talking about that, it's in here somewhere. It's in this chapter, right?
Yeah, so.
Cause I can remember. Y'all do get this, this is important, y'all get this? Yeah, who's me? Like, is that how like um, how if your resistance increases, your blood flow decreases? And how like, if the velocity of the blood decreases, then um, it's gonna be faster in the aorta, and so? Cause he gonna ask questions like.
Wait, so if your velocity decreases, then blood flow is faster in the aorta?
Yeah, right here. Literally everything he had in red, it was on the T. He gonna have like multiple question about like blood flow, like if this like gonna increase, like if we have a resistance, you know your blood flow is not gonna be increased, it's gonna decrease because it's more resistant. Um, oh, this is new something else. Okay, this is saying, if the total cross area increases, the blood flow increases. Read it back to me.
Oh, um, it says, explain how blood pressure and the resistance to explain the relationship between the cross-sectional area of blood vessels and the rate of blood flow.
Okay, yeah, um. It's saying, once you leave the um, aorta, your total cross area increases, but as it increases, your blood flow is gonna decrease.
I'm saying right, right?
It's just kind of like the cross. Cause it's saying, as it's a reference to smaller vessels, total cross area increases, so that's why if you get into like your veins, it's gonna increase. But I know that it's basically in the aorta, because like you don't have that many cross areas, so it just don't flow.
Right.
So like if you're.
As you get into like your organs, and then get into the smaller capillaries, the.
The cross area is gonna like increase, but the blood flow. Okay, but like in the aorta, you don't have that many cross areas, so your blood flow is gonna increase. Okay, so it's like the.
It's kind of like if the artery is big enough, it doesn't have to have all that much force, so as it gets smaller and smaller, it has to increase pressure. Right.
Yeah.
Cause it's bigger, right, as it gets bigger, it don't have to have this much pressure, so as I get, as I get closer to like the, what's, what's the name organ, like kidney, like as I go more towards the kidney, the best is getting smaller, cause again, to look capillaries, it's like all around the kidney. So like, as those um, as the vessels get smaller and smaller and smaller, cause you know capillaries are small, they're small, so it has to increase the pressure to get the blood down to the end of it, cause it's small. Just think about it, cause big enough, I don't have to force a lot of water through it.
Need to know this, as ready, increase, blood flow decrease, that vice versa. You need to know this, you know if the resistance increases, your blood pressure increases, cause you gotta like have more force, because it's more resistant. It says like.
What's that, I'm gonna say like a water hose.
A water hose, yeah, it says like, if you have more resistance, like, say like you got a water hose, it's just like, hold it, it's more resistant, it's gonna be like more pressure. So that's why your blood pressure will like increase, cause it's having more pressure to click it in. I have a lot of questions like this, and you got more water, you know you're gonna have more blood volume. You gonna have a lot of questions like that, like, you got blood volume, more blood volume, what's happening to your blood pressure, stuff like that. Give us a little picture. Know this is contraction and exhalation. Know your mean arterial pressure. Everything I'm telling y'all to know is, is like what I had on test, so hopefully he didn't change it.
He changed it.
He thinks I'll.
He said you have to make it more difficult. I guess he said something about, of somebody from a previous semester, like he helped out a little stupid, and he was like, the girl passed the test with A, and she wasn't A. So it was like, he had to fix it, so now we got heart test.
Let me get two pumps, hold it. I don't know if you have any question about this. Did he go in depth with this, I'm happy.
He talked about it for a good minute, but not like super.
Just know what it is. Know this, know you're sympathetic and you're um, parasympathetic, and know your parasympathy is when your body's like reacting, relaxed, and so your heart rate and stuff is gonna be increased. But you know if you're sympathetic, it's gonna increase your heart rate. You ready? Do we, do y'all have any more questions? And then y'all, parasympathy, with a, with a calling.
Um, since you know it's like three chapters, can you give me like a estimate of like the percentage of each chapter that's gonna be?
Equal value.
It's not.
It really will.
It's three chapters, how it's gonna be?
It's not equal, trust me, it'll probably be like twenty questions for each chapter.
So the test is like sixty questions or?
Y'all please know them.
She's telling, she's, she's telling y'all a lot of things, make sure you understand.
Read everything on these.
Yeah.
And know what like each one will do.
It's not more so than anatomy, she'll tell you, it's not really the anatomy, it's more what's happening.